Good afternoon.
We're friends.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, October 28, 2024. Please be advised that the open, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and remain standing if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting is called to order. The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council should require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization which they represent, and their address unless the address requirement has been waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking, speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Monday of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that day nor for a planned future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business is a reminder that due to the Veterans Day holiday, City Council will not meet on Monday, November 11th of 2024. Next then would be our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and 3.
Is there anyone here to speak on an item on consent, either Sections 1, 2, or 3? Anyone here to address the council on a consent item? All right. Seeing no one come forward to address us on consent, Madam Clerk, please move us forward.
Can vote on these items. Item 1A is approving the professional service agreement supplement number 5 for preliminary engineering services between the City of Lincoln and Benish and Company for the Adams Street from 36th Street to 49th Street Rehab Project, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving the 2024-25 Joint Budget Committee Nonprofit Child Care Assistant Funding Recommendations, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Next up, public hearing liquor resolutions. Is there anyone here to address? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Madam Clerk. I'll let you do that.
I'll call items 4A and B together. Application of Cornosker Liquor LLC doing business as F&amp;D's Liquor for a classy liquor license located at 3243 Cornosker Highway, Suite A1, and the related manager application of Dennis W. Thompson.
All right. Please come forward.
So, council?
Good afternoon. You may choose either mic or phone. They're on either side. All right. Please say your name and your address.
My name is Dennis William Thompson. I live at 1830 North 58th Street here in Lincoln, ZIP Code 68505.
All right, welcome. Good afternoon. Would you tell us a little bit about your new venture?
So I purchased this business from the previous owners two weeks ago and would just like to continue operations as they are.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? All right. Well, I see that you're working off of a temporary permit?
Yes.
All right. How's it going so far?
It's going well. It's a little bit slower, but fine.
All right. All right. If no one else has any other questions?
I don't.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Public.
Oh, yeah. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to address this application?
No.
Madam.
No.
Madam Clerk, seeing no, excuse me, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Seeing no one else coming forward to talk about these two items, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 4A and 4B.
Second. Second, Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Great. All righty, let's move on to public hearing resolutions.
I'll call item 5A, approving the selection of a contractor pursuant to the bids to be opened on October 3rd, 2024, and authorizing the execution of the construction contract between the City of Lincoln and Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of federal transportation program funds for designing and construction engineering services for the 56th Street and Spruce Streets of Van Dorn Street Rehab Project.
Good evening. Elizabeth Elliott, Director, Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th. This, as you can see from the agenda, was continued from October 7th until today. Indot is now asking that we continue it one more week to make sure, for public hearing as well. I'm not super clear on what the, why they need to delay, but they've asked us to do it, and given that they are managing and the funding and all this, we are asking that it be continued one more week, and then hopefully we'll be able to move forward after that, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Elliott? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? All right, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 5B, a resolution expressing the city's gratitude and honoring the outstanding service and dedication of Patricia Lopez.
Councilman Bowers.
I wanted to bring this resolution forward, and I think that I'll start off by reading the resolution and then providing some opening comments on it. The resolution states, "A resolution expressing the city's gratitude and honoring the outstanding service and dedication of Patricia Lopez." Whereas Patricia Lopez has been a dedicated public servant and advocate for public health for over 40 years, whereas Patricia Lopez faithfully served the City of Lincoln for over 30 years as a member of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, whereas she served as interim director and director of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department from May of 2019 until October 31st, 2024, whereas Patricia Lopez demonstrated exceptional dedication, leadership, and expertise throughout her tenure, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic, whereas Patricia Lopez played a crucial role in developing and implementing public health strategies to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of our community, whereas she worked tirelessly during the pandemic to ensure access to essential healthcare services, including but not limited to testing, vaccination, and treatment for COVID-19, and whereas she has been a tireless champion for public health and has been unceasingly diligent in her pursuit to improve the overall health and well-being of our community. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Lincoln, by the City Council of the City of Lincoln, Nebraska, that the mayor and the City Council of the City of Lincoln do hereby jointly express their gratitude and honor the outstanding service and dedication of Patricia Lopez. I wanted to bring this forward because we're going to have a new health director that's going to start in a couple of days, and I've been a Board of Health member longer than I've been a member of the City Council. And I remember my first interaction with Director Lopez was when we were working on making the Health Department become accredited, and her talent and her competency and her skills were just completely unmatched. At the time, we had a health director, Siobhan, who had passed away in 2019, and Pat stepped into the role to help provide continuity of service and to make sure that we had strong leadership at the helm for the Health Department. And we went through the interview process to find a new health director, and we did a national search, and the person that would have been a good fit for Lincoln Lancaster County did not come through during that process, and so Pat graciously agreed to extend her service, and then the pandemic hit, and what was only supposed to be a couple of weeks, couple of months turned into years of service because Pat believed in protecting the city and the county. I remember when we were appointing her to be the health director, there was a lot of detractors that were in the room that said some horrible things about her, and she sat there the entire time and listened to every single person because that's the strength that she has. She was willing to hear everyone out and was willing to not let up and was willing to sit there and, because she knew that it was important that she was visible and that she heard what everyone had to say. Over the pandemic and during COVID, countless hundreds of lives in Lincoln have been saved because of her actions, but for her actions would have been lost. And I can't help but think that, that my mom's life was one of the ones that she had saved because she worked to mitigate the impact that COVID had in our community. We owe her so much for what she did for us, our city and our county. We owe her, we owe her more than we'll ever be able to repay, and I hope that this is just the start of honoring her service and her legacy. So with all that being said, I just want to say thank you so much to Director Lopez for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Councilman. Would anybody else like to speak?
I'd like to offer just a few words. I don't think I have the length of association with Pat Lopez that Councilman Bowers has, but I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that our community has hundreds, thousands of people who find their way to service, and that when we build a community, we build a community of people willing to serve each other and to offer what they can. And some of us take small roles and some of us take larger roles, and Pat was a public servant, a willing servant, who did her work quietly, but very effectively, and she had great passion that showed itself in her coming to work day after day and not asking for much, just wanting to get the work done. And so I just wanted to thank Director Lopez for the years of service you've provided our community.
Thank you, Pat. Madam Clerk, you may call the next item.
Is there anybody?
People need to.
Oh, I keep forgetting this. I just want super efficiency today. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak on this resolution? Thank you for the reminder.
I don't think I could add anymore to what has already been said about this, but as just a person that, we all went through this kind of together, it was seeing the director's strong, intelligent approach that gave me a sense of calm and made me feel assured that we were going to get out of this. And so it, I, you know, there's a few archetypes of leadership, and I think that she's definitely one of them, just the way that she did calmly, succinctly, and intelligently convey information to the public and just held her ground and kept going forward. It's very admirable. Thank you.
Thank you much. Would you like to leave your name on the record, please?
Adam Hens, 1919 Prospect Street.
Thank you, Mr. Hens. Would anyone else like to come forward? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 5C, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October 1st through October 15th of 2024.
All right. Would anyone like to approach council on this item, claims against the city? Is there anyone here today to talk about a claim against the city? All right, thank you.
Excuse me. I'll call item 5D, approving the proposal and pricing agreement between the City of Lincoln and Mutual of Omaha to provide life insurance and long-term disability to the employees of the city for a three-year term from January 1st of 2025 through January 1st of 2028.
All right. Is there anyone here to present this item? Is there a director in the room to present this item? All right. Would anyone like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing no one coming forward, we can proceed.
I'll call item 5E, a resolution to clarify that council aides may be hired as city employees to the Human Resources Department.
All right. Councilman Weber, would you like to introduce this?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Washington. So I introduced, introduced this resolution to clarify the ways in which a city council member can go about hiring a council aide. I think we had really robust discussion during the budget process, and, you know, I think clarity is always a good thing to have. So I appreciate in Councilman Bowers' amendment to the budget that established or appropriated funds for council aides to council members, that it really focused on the individual needs of the council member, right? The needs that I have in my city council office compared to what Councilman Bowers has, Councilman Carlson, Councilman Duden, whomever it may be. Each council member has a unique approach to the job, and I think having aides that are able to complement that will only lead to increased accountability, efficiency, accessibility to one of the most public-facing governments that citizens will interact with. I talked about how, how I'd always envisioned my aide is very similar to that of a clerkship that a law student would do during their time in law school, where they engage with the law, where they engage with public policy, and that builds a deeper understanding of public policy. And the reason I always envisioned that was, I really, I mean, I'm really passionate about generating the next generation of policymakers. When I was elected at the age of 25, I would look around in the room, and I was usually the youngest one in that room, and I know that there are college students, I know that there are law students, I know there are young professionals in this city who have the talents to share with their local government. And so that's something that I've always been really passionate about, and I think that this is, this resolution clarifying it allows for us to hire young individuals who are qualified and experienced and capable in serving in this capacity. And so that's really what this resolution seeks to do, is to clean that up, to make sure that it also includes paraprofessional and technical workers, so that way these aides can be hired through the Human Resource Department of the city. So what this does is this resolution clearly states that there are two options that a council member can go. They can go the independent consultant route, utilizing the city's standard consulting agreement, but another option they can go is hiring the individual as a city employee through the Human Resources Department as a temporary part-time paraprofessional or technical worker in the unclassified service. And I also just have to take a quick second to thank all six of my colleagues on the dais. I know that we didn't always see eye to eye during this process, and I know that there were some difficult conversations and some hard conversations, but once the funds were appropriated and once we were able to pass this amendment to the budget, I've been met with nothing other than a collaborative nature, and I really do appreciate that. So I would encourage my colleagues to support this resolution.
Are there any questions for Councilman Weber? Councilman Schob, and then Councilman Duden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilman Weber. I have one small question. Since an aide can be hired as a city employee through the Human Resource Department, will these jobs be advertised and follow all the other rules and regulations of hiring in our city?
Yeah, I think it may be more appropriate to have the city attorney speak to that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Haunty Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. I don't think that there's any requirement that it be posted. These are part-time, unclassified, so again, I don't think that it's required that it be posted in the manner that you might see other, some other full-time employees.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Duden.
You might want to stay put.
Okay. I don't think there's anything that prohibits it from being, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't believe that it's required.
My next question had to do with, once they're a city employee, they're entitled to equipment?
I mean, I would say it probably a little bit differently. I mean, I heard you say entitled. I would say that they could be provided equipment.
So there's an added cost there?
If they were, the equipment that you're talking about, let's, a laptop, for instance, yeah, I mean, there, there would be additional costs for those things, yes.
And is that part of the aide, that package that we passed?
Well, I think that without looking at the resolution that was passed during the budget cycle, I would just state that the council allocated a certain amount of funds, a maximum for each council member to hire individual consultants. So one way to look at it would be, here is the money that the council has allocated, and all costs could come out of that. Certainly, as you are fully aware, council member, the council can, as a body, act to do something else, to maybe clarify if there's questions about equipment or those sort of things, but certainly as the resolution is written right now.
I just want the public to understand that there's a difference between an outside consultant, which uses his own equipment, his own internet, his own phone, versus an employee has, would be, I guess, able to have a city email, a city laptop, a city cellphone, and that's, that's going to be an added cost.
I would like to just chime in that, you know, the city council does currently have a secretary, and that secretary does not have a city-issued cellphone. There is nothing that requires that these items be purchased if they're, they're not, if they don't make sense, right? There's nothing that requires city council members to have equipment. There's nothing that requires the city council secretary to have equipment. So I guess, I just don't know how that would be different in this situation.
I'd like to, my understanding is that the $24,000 covers the whole of it. So any equipment that is required or needed, and the councilperson who hires their aide gets to choose if they would like them to have access to an email account and a laptop, then that comes out of the $24,000 that's allocated per councilperson, and it does remain the property of the city.
And I think that language should be included in this.
Is there an amendment?
Well, I would make a motion that there should be some amendment that explains these added costs if the person's going to be labeled as a city employee.
Could you, would you, so, Mr. Duden?
Let me go through that one more time.
I just want to, and Councilman Weber, I would really appreciate your assistance here. We're going to listen to the motion and craft the motion on the fly, which is a little dangerous, but let's do our best.
And anybody else could chime in, too.
Well, I would, I have two points to say to that. One, I don't know if during the public hearing, outside of the voting sessions, necessarily the appropriate place to craft an amendment from the dais.
I would, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I would agree with that, and I think the other thing that I'm a little sensitive to is that, like, when we made compromises on this, to water this down, to build consensus, the folks that we tried to appease to water this down and to build consensus with still voted against it. So my recommendation is that we should not make amendments off the fly because I feel like that the ability to negotiate in good faith has been a little tarnished on this, right? So the council can decide to do whatever they want, but I don't plan on supporting anything other than what Brody has brought forward because this is a very sensitive issue for all of us, because I think this kind of cuts into how we view governing and the philosophies that we have on what our role should be as a city council and the varying levels that each of us have on that. But because of the past attempts to compromise that watered this down, that still wasn't able to build consensus with everyone on board, my recommendation would be to not make any changes other than what Brody's talked to all of us about. If folks want to make changes later on, there's nothing stopping from council members introducing legislation after today to build consensus and bring something forward, but I think doing it from the dais is irresponsible, and I think there's going to be unintended consequences to it. So that might be a little spicy of me to throw out there, but I'm, this has been a rough road for everyone.
I hear you, Councilman Bowers. I'm going to ask Carlson, Justin Carlson, but then I want to come back to a question for Councilman Duden.
And I guess as I'm reading Brody's amendment here, too, it says re-appropriate to fund a maximum of $24,000 for each council member. So to me, that would be included. That's not addition, it's not $24,000 and a computer.
So I guess, I just don't know how that would be different in this situation.
I'd like to, my understanding is that the $24,000 covers the whole of it. So any equipment that is required or needed, and the councilperson who hires their aide gets to choose if they would like them to have access to an email account and a laptop, then that comes out of the $24,000 that's allocated per councilperson, and it does remain the property of the city.
And I think that language should be included in this.
Is there an amendment?
Well, I would make a motion that there should be some amendment that explains these added costs if the person's going to be labeled as a city employee.
Could you, would you, so, Mr. Duden?
Let me go through that one more time.
I just want to, and Councilman Weber, I would really appreciate your assistance here. We're going to listen to the motion and craft the motion on the fly, which is a little dangerous, but let's do our best.
And anybody else could chime in, too.
Well, I have two points to say to that. One, I don't know if during the public hearing, outside of the voting sessions, necessarily the appropriate place to craft an amendment from the dais?
I would, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I would agree with that, and I think the other thing that I'm a little sensitive to is that, like, when we made compromises on this, to water this down, to build consensus, the folks that we tried to appease to water this down and to build consensus with still voted against it. So my recommendation is that we should not make amendments off the fly, because I feel like that the ability to negotiate in good faith has been a little tarnished on this, right? So the council can decide to do whatever they want, but I don't plan on supporting anything other than what Brody has brought forward, because this is a very sensitive issue for all of us, because I think this kind of cuts into how we view governing and the philosophies that we have on what our role should be as a city council, and the varying levels that each of us have on that. But because of the past attempts to compromise that watered this down, that still wasn't able to build consensus with everyone on board, my recommendation would be to not make any changes other than what Brody's talked to all of us about. If folks want to make changes later on, there's nothing stopping from council members introducing legislation after today to build consensus and bring something forward, but I think doing it from the dais is irresponsible, and I think there's going to be unintended consequences to it. So that might be a little spicy of me to throw out there, but I'm, this has been a rough road for everyone.
I hear you, Councilman Bowers. I'm going to ask Carl, Justin Carlson, but then I want to come back to a question for Councilman Duden.
And I guess as I'm reading Brody's amendment here, too, it says re-appropriate to fund a maximum of $24,000 for each council member. So to me, that would be included. That's not addition, it's not $24,000 and a computer and a phone and all this other stuff. My sense is, that's what's budgeted. That's a line item for this position, and that's an all-in type of a cost, that's to hire that person, to outfit that person, too, and that is the amount that's allocated to us to spend on that. And to me, I don't think we really need to have further clarification, because it says right here that there's a maximum of $24,000. I think it's fine to bring up that question and so forth, but to me, it's answered in this, that it says a maximum of $24,000.
Councilman Duden.
I think I'll just withdraw my idea of an amendment and just move forward then.
Are you satisfied that this is clear?
No.
Okay.
I would encourage my colleague, Councilman Duden, to draft a resolution and introduce it at a later meeting. You know, that was the whole purpose of this amendment, was that, you know, once these funds were allocated, there were still questions that existed about how we can go about this process. As I said in the very beginning, I think clarity is a good thing, so I'd be more than willing to, you know, have a conversation with you, Councilman, going forward about how we do this. As I said, I just, I think crafting an amendment to a resolution that is, that was introduced to clarify amendment to the already-passed budget will only do a disservice to this process.
Councilman Shob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was faster than I was ready. Councilman Weber, on line 17 of your resolution, starting with the word A95, the next word there is "may."
Mm-hmm.
I think you're proposing this as another alternative. The professional contract is still there.
Absolutely, yep.
Or the person may be, right? Is it either?
Absolutely, and so, and that, no, absolutely, sorry, I was cutting you off. Absolutely, the, there's nothing that says shall, will, it is simply may, just this, like, this entire concept of a council aide is optional if an individual council member wishes to utilize this option. This resolution clarifies that there are two avenues in which a council member may hire an aide, either as an independent consultant utilizing the standard consulting agreement, or as an employee through the city as a temporary part-time paraprofessional technical worker in the unclassified service. So no one's forced to hire a council aide, no one is forced to have that council aide be an independent consultant or to be a city employee, it just allows the council member the option if this is something they wish to pursue.
Any other discussion?
You're fine.
Would there be an interest in a delay to figure out?
I don't think they're connected, right? Like, I, if, what this resolution serves to do is to clarify that there are two avenues that a council member can go if they choose to hire an aide. I feel like the resolution does what it seeks to do. If other council members have other concerns about this process, I am more than willing to engage in conversations about their amendments, but right now, I don't, I don't see a need to amend this resolution, and I don't see an amendment on the, being offered, and so I don't see a need to delay.
Councilman Shob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Weber, I understand what you, what you've written here. We've, as the city council, have always had the ability to hire staff, right? Would you agree? And this is just, it is a repeat of, it's a reinvention, re, I don't know, lost the word. It's the same thing we're doing.
Yes, yeah, I don't think it reinvents anything, I don't think it establishes anything that didn't exist, I think it just seeks to clarify the process that was adopted in our budget.
And we've hired a clerk or secretary, and we've hired staff in the past.
Absolutely.
This just reinforces, as they'll get to work.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
I think I would offer that there is a slight difference. The council as a body has had the ability to hire staff, and we have hired staff in the past. This is clarifying the ability for council members to hire personal aides.
Thank you.
All right. If there is no other discussion?
There'll be discussion later on, right?
Oh, right, yeah. But if there's no discussion right now for clarification, making certain that we understand what we've got on the table, then we can move forward, after we find out if the public has anything to say. So if anyone would like to address counsel on this item, either in opposition or in favor, please come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move forward.
I'll call item five, excuse me, 5F, Comprehensive Plan Conformance, 24018, Application of FOG Limited Partnership to Review Us to Conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed conservation easement to preserve, protect, and maintain flood storage and natural resources within the Jamaica North use permit boundary on property journey located at 14th and Saltella Road.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you as well. Kent Seacrest, representing FOG Limited Partnership. Today I have CJ Gunzel in the audience for any questions that you might have of him, who's the, his LLC is the manager of FOG Limited Partnership, and Brad Marshall from Olson is also here, who's done a lot of the engineering work. As you might recall, last spring, we came forward and unanimously approved a use permit for Jamaica North Business Park, and we also then got approval of a Jamaica North Edition Final Plaid. And both of those required us to do a conservation easement. So we're just here to fill out the last step of this process, to calls for, and just for There's really two areas. The bigger area is where will be retained by the home, the Property Owners Association, and could be, has to be for flood control management, but it could also be for a prairie wetland or a forested wetland bank. And then the smaller piece, off to the right side, is the piece that FOG will convey to the city of Lincoln, which will be an added buffer as well for Wilderness Park to this effort. So we want to talk about the ability, this conservation easement puts the restrictions on, it will not be developed, but it could still become a wetland bank along the way. So we also want the ability to coordinate, which is in here with the Army Corps of Engineers and the State of Nebraska. If you remember, the State of Nebraska owns the property to the north, and that's a wetland bank for them. So we might be trying to coordinate and combine wetland banks as we go forward. Adam Hinks, President of Friends of Wilderness Park, has been instrumental at getting this all done with us, and we just express how important it is to provide these new buffer areas to Wilderness Park. He's had other friends from Friends of Wilderness Park to help, Foster Collins and Nicole Flektus and Travis Jensen were also in the mix here to make this go forward. Just if you remember, why are we even here? On a conservation easement, state statute says you need to make a finding that this is in the public's interest and is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The staff reviewed it and said that both things were there in their opinion. This went to Planning Commission. Oh, we had neighborhood meet outreach, so no neighborhood opposition, Planning Commission hearing, they recommended eight zero of this to you, and so here we are, trying to get the final vote so that this can go forward, and we ask for your support and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Seacrest. Are there any questions from council members?
Thank you.
Don't see any. All right. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Mr. Hinks.
Thank you. Good evening. Adam Hinks, 1919 Prospect Street, Executive Director of Friends of Wilderness Park, speaking on their behalf in support of this resolution. I think that, going back to the Director Lopez, there's this quiet leadership that's pretty amazing, and I think CJ Gunzel kind of holds that type of leadership, too. A development is really only as good as the property owner, because that's the real captain of the ship. They say, this is where we're going, this is where we're headed. And CJ understood how important being next to Wilderness Park was, and he took that to heart through phone calls and conversations with myself, describing how important that small riparian strip to the west of the Jamaica Trail, and then also creating a wetland that can connect with the state's wetland just right there in Wilderness Park. So we have all of this amazing wetland, riparian corridor, the riparian wooded area, that's going to be a place that's not touched, and I can't wait to kind of have some volunteer events in there and stuff, and get to know that piece of land as well as I know. We used this win to help spur on more support for Friends of Wilderness Park, because this is what we do. We work to expand the protections of nature in Lancaster County, and because of that, we are becoming a stronger organization. Wilderness is becoming stronger, and nature itself is being insured protection for the long run. So for everyone that's watching at home, or for anybody that reads about this in the paper, you know, there's, I can't think of anything better than to leave your legacy and for the wild in our natural legacy and perpetuity, because there's such a unique, something that really cannot be reclaimed once it's gone. And so CJ, Kent Seacrest, making sure that, yeah, we make sure that we talk with Friends of Wilderness Park, Danai Kalkowski, who helped at the Planning Commission meeting, Steve Hendrickson at Planning, Ben Callahan at Planning, Tim Zock with Watershed, Brad Marshall, who helped with engineering, Carter Hubbard, who helped with Watershed, Nicole Flektus, and Travis Jensen at Solidago, who helped me, advised me, I see them as a real inspiration. They do such great work at Solidago. David Carey at Planning, and Maggie Stuckey-Ross at Parks. You know, it just takes so many people to work on something that's so special, and it really is, you know, through all the, you know, being a person who's into ecology and nature, like, sometimes the world can be really hard, because you see the degradation of wild spaces, but in this moment, in this instance, this really gives us all a lot of hope. And so I can't thank everyone involved enough, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who'd like to approach us and speak on this topic, either in support or in opposition? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move to the voting session.
Item 5A is approving the selection of a contractor pursuant to the bids to be open on October 3, 2024, and authorizing the execution of the construction contract between the city of Lincoln and Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of federal transportation program funds for designing and construction engineering services for the 56th Street from Spruce Street to Van Dorn Street Rehab Project, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, Carlson.
Madam Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, as requested, I'd like to add that, or make an amendment that we continue this for one week with the hearing.
Second.
All right. Second, Beckus. So this was a motion to continue one week, entered by Carlson, seconded by Beckus. Any questions about the motion? All right. Any discussion in general on this item, both the main motion and the motion to continue? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the motion to continue.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, thank you very much. We'll see it in one more week.
Item 5B is a resolution expressing the city's gratitude in honoring the outstanding service and dedication of Patricia Lopez, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any further discussion on this item? Madam Clerk.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5C is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October 1 through October 15 of 2024, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Before we get to the main motion, Councilman Beckus.
Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce a motion to amend number one with the claim of Nick Gorbatski removed from the list of denied claims and added to the list of allowed claims in the amount of $424.24.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion?
And I'm assuming this is at the direction of city law to?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The motion to amend comes from the city attorney's office.
Thank you.
All righty. Let's vote on this motion, and then we can move forward to any other motions to amend. So this is motion to amend one, moving from denied to allowed.
Duden?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Beckus.
I would like to make a motion to amend number two to remove the claim of Christian Sawyer removed from the list of denied claims. This is a, again, a request by the city attorney's office. Claimant has requested that his claim be continued until a later date.
Okay, so this is a hold for a later date?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I will second.
Carlson, second. Any questions for clarification? All right. Then let's vote on motion to amend number two, moving from active on the list to hold.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, and there's one more.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Beckus.
I would like to make a motion to amend number three. This is in regards to the claim of James and Carrie Gray, that they, that their claim should be added to the list of allowed claims in the amount of $16,611.75. Again, this is at the request of the city attorney's office. This claim has been settled between the claimant and the city of Lincoln in that dollar amount.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson. Are there any questions of clarification? Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's call motion to amend three.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
And now the main motion.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Thank you for your patience, that was a lot. All right, Madam Clerk, item 5D.
Item 5D is approving the proposal and pricing agreement between the city of Lincoln and Mutual of Omaha to provide life insurance and long-term disability to the employees of the city for a three-year term from January 1, '25 through January 1, '28, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk. Oh, were you?
Well, I was just, we do have the director here.
Let's hold for just one second. Earlier, there was no discussion, but we didn't have the director. Does anyone have a question for the director before we get into voting?
No, ma'am.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Second, Carlson. Any discussion on this item? Councilman Bowers.
I just got a few remarks that I want to say. A few weeks ago, we voted and passed an initiative that had been worked on for years, and one that I feel really hit the mark for good governance and empowering true representation. This was spurned when the council took a vote to remove a policy aid position from the council budget, and as the lone vote in opposition, and we have a different council at the time, I stood by my concerns, and those concerns remain true to this day. It's important that our city council is made up of citizen legislators in making sure that everyone who runs for office and is elected by their community can serve, and that they have the tools they need, regardless if they're working traditional jobs, or if they're retired, if they have children or aging parents, or if they're wealthy, or if they're working class, and it's important that we craft a system that regardless of who the community chooses to be the representation, that individual is able to serve. In addition, the city council is and should be a branch of government, not a department. As the branch of government most closest to the people, we have an obligation to legislate, advocate, and investigate, and I think that this issue really cuts to the core, the governing philosophies of what the role of the city council should be. I was a school social worker in my first term, which provided constraints in my service, and I'm proud of the several initiatives and ordinances I passed that dealt with children, working people, and families, and public health, and economic development, but there's still so much work to be done. Some folks might say, "If you don't have the time to do the job, then don't run." However, I do not think the answer to this problem is that we should discourage people with traditional jobs and family commitments to run or serve in office. Those are exactly the kind of people we need to represent us in government. The majority of elected officials are older, retired, and wealthy, and live a much different life than a 30-something school social worker who grew up in Havelock. Just for some context, I contacted several city councils with a similar population, form of government, and budget size throughout the nation, to learn about how they run their offices and what tools and resources they use to their job. It became clear to me that our legislative branch of government, the city council, was not at the same strength of several of our cousin cities, and that we may be missing the mark in executing our duties. The starting point for this package was developed out of solid year of discussion, compromise, and research in, between myself and Brody Weber, and Benny Schob, and Justin Carlson, and the willingness to engage in conversation in good faith. Unfortunately, we landed on, unfortunately, some of the things that were negotiated on that were either taken out or changed were done in an attempt to build consensus, only for those individuals to vote in opposition to the finished project, product, which I think hurts our ability to negotiate in good faith in the future. I suspect, though, that some of the same critics might end up hiring an aide for themselves once it's set up, benefiting from what they had originally opposed. I'm thrilled, though, that there's been consensus to clarify and strengthen this proposal for council members, providing them the opportunity to hire support staff as city staff members. This is good policy and good governance, and I struggle to understand why folks may think that it's good governance to have a weaker branch of government in this, in the system that we have. But I'm thrilled that there's been consensus to put this in and to strengthen this, and I look forward to future conversations and future votes to strengthen our branch of government, create a system where all folks can serve regardless of their financial status, and where future councils can be given the tools they need to do their job.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
I would just like to reiterate that this is a resolution that seeks to clarify the two avenues that a council member can pursue if they decide to go with an optional council aide, and that, at the end of the day, this is about accountability, accessibility, and availability of the city council to the folks that elected the city council to serve them, and that's, that's what this is about.
All right. I want to thank both the council members who've spoken so far and on this topic. I think that the resolution that's been presented is clear at the front end, where it says what the budget is and what the allowance is. I appreciate the creativity of the Law Department, the councilors, and the HR Department. And having seen the HR director in the room, I believe there are one or two questions that council members would like to direct toward you. So Director McIntyre, could you please come forward? And City Attorney Christie, I realize this is slightly out of order, but this is what we're going to do right now.
Good evening, Barb McIntyre, 555 South Penn Street, and I apologize for being late tonight.
Okay. Councilman Schob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director McIntyre, you've read the resolution. Do you have any concerns as a human resources director about the path we're going down?
I do not. This actually fits really well with other hires that we do of a kind of more seasonal or at-will, temporary kind of nature, and we can bring them on for a period of time to do the required necessary work, and it fits well in our, what we call a paratechnical worker kind of role that we have already established at the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Are there any other questions for Director McIntyre? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any other comments or more discussion from council members on this item?
Well, I suppose I should make a comment here, if I could.
You may.
I was against this because I saw it as adding more cost to government, getting government bigger, and that's why I've been opposed to this. I think I've been fortunate to have people volunteer to assist me on researching some items that are unpaid, and I appreciate their service for doing that sort of thing. Some of them have a passion on different issues, and so I appreciate their work for it. I think there's been some comments here or statements that would allude to, depended on the wealth of the council member, and I think that's really taken this out of context in a big way, and I almost see that as offensive. But that's my view, and I was told that I could have a different view while sitting on the city council. And when I do have a different view, that's the way I'm going to vote as well, so.
Thank you.
I just, I wanted to respond to the specificity of the wealth comments and why I made that comment. When I was a school social worker, and even while I did not have health insurance while being on the council, you know, I had to work in order to be able to pay the bills to support me and my family. If I was independently wealthy or retired and didn't have to work, then of course, I would be able to spend, you know, every waking moment to city council service. However, people elected me because I was a social worker, because I brought the stories and, of the families and the children that I had worked with throughout my entire career, and because, you know, I was still working. And it's just, it's a basis, it's a basis of truth. If you don't have the constraints of another job, then you're able to dedicate more time to this service. And I don't think that the average person wants to have a system where only people who don't work, or only people who have the financial means to not have to seek employment in order to pay medical bills or to keep food on the table, that that is the best representation of our city. And so that's why I made the wealth comments, and that's why, that's why I stand by it, right? Because I still have to work, I still have to pay out of pocket for health costs, I still have, I still have to provide for my family, and I think that is reflective of everyday Lincolnites and Nebraskins. And there's, there's so many people who say that they would run for office, but they cannot take the financial hit, and this doesn't even address that. We're not even talking about payment of city council members or any other elected office. But we need to be able to say, regardless of who you are, if your community chooses you to serve in office and elects you to take on this honor of being able to speak for them, then we need to, if we're not going to have a conversation about what the compensation looks like for elected officials and for city council members, then we absolutely need to talk about being able to make sure that they have the resources they need to do their job. Folks can say, you know, we could rely on, you know, the administration staff to do that, but we're going to have competing interests at times. That is just normal, and it's healthy. And so we need to be able to have folks that we can rely on to be able to do the research for policies that may not be popular, to help residents navigate constituent issues, so it's not just us connecting them with the director, but instead trying to really dig in and see what is the historic information that led to this. And so I'm, I'm a little bit on a soapbox, so I'll step off of it, but I, Tom, I'm sorry if that comes off as offensive, you know, about the wealth thing, but I mean, it's a struggle that I've had, because for four years, I loved my job as a school social worker, and I had a great team that I worked with, but I really felt that having just one person on my team to be able to make sure that constituents don't have to wait a week to get a response back from, or, you know, to be able to do some really deep digging into various policy issues that may come forward, that may not come forward, being able to squeeze that into people just trying to survive day to day. I mean, it's unfortunate that struggling to make ends meet is probably reflective of the majority of the population of the world we live in, but that's the world we live in, and the only way that's going to change is if we get more people who understand the struggle elected into office. So I'm getting a little soapboxes, but so I'll step off.
Is there any other councilors who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Juden?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1.
All right. Next item, please.
I'll call item 5F, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24018, application of log-limited partnership to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln-Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed conservation easement to preserve, protect, and maintain flood storage and natural resources within Jamaica Northeast permit boundary, a property generally located at 14th and Satula Road, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Councilman Schob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited about this. I'm really excited about the relationship, the working relationship between the developer and the community, that we can get to a win-win for everyone.
Here, here.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Beckius.
I would just like to reiterate Councilman Schob's statement, and thank CJ in particular for his work on this. Thank you, CJ.
I'll be very quickly redundant. When we protect our environment, we protect ourselves. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I believe we have a motion to amend.
You're right. We do have a motion to amend.
I would move that we amend Bill 24R 472 with the attachment A that was included in the council packet to reflect the latest agreement between the developer and the city in terms of the easements. Again, this was requested by the Law Department.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schob. Any discussion about the motion to amend? Madam Clerk.
Juden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Now the main motion.
Juden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. We're going to proceed to public hearing on ordinances, second reading, and related 6A is the first one.
Item 6A is approving the lease agreement between City of Lincoln and Grace Lutheran Church for the lease of space by Aging Partners for its senior center program at 2225 Washington Street from November 1, '24, through August 31, '26.
Good evening, Council Chair Washington and members of the city council. Kay Wenzel, Assistant Director at Aging Partners, 600 South 70th, Building 2. This is a lease agreement for the space we use at Grace Lutheran Church, and we've been there about a year now. It's used for senior center activities and congregant meals at lunchtime. It's been a good location for us. It's a flat, level entry, so it's, it's very good for our clients who use wheelchairs, walkers, or have other mobility issues. Our attendance has increased, and the number of activities and services going on out there have increased. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Wenzel? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on the lease between Aging Partners and Grace Lutheran Church? Seeing none, we'll proceed.
I'll call item 6B, Change of Zone 24023, application of Diamond Enterprises to change the zone from H3 Highway Commercial to I-1 Industrial, a property generally located at 3501 West O Street.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Director Carey, welcome.
Good evening, council members. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South Penn Street. I did not see someone from the applicant's side jumping up here, so I thought I'd cover that. Start out with a visual, I think this will help, just kind of make sure we understand where we're at on this. So this is a change of zone along West O Street, just south of West O Street. We have this highlighted parcel that is proposed for your consideration for a change of zone from H3 to I-1. I think mainly this is just an extension of what some other changes of zone to I-1 out here that we've done previously. This is to provide a little more space for continued development for steel manufacturing out there. I will just note that what this does is it continues the layout for having H3 along the West O Street frontage, to have different types of uses along the roadway, and then to the south is the heavier industrial zoning. This just follows that pattern, so we are in support of that. The Planning Commission approved this 8 to 0. It was on the consent agenda, so there was no hearing or testimony, so we put that in front of you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Carey? Director Carey, I just want to make one question here. It seems like this is a familiar piece of property, and did we address a change of zone here in the last year or so where we were keeping H3 at the, along O Street and adding I-1 further south? Is this just moving the I-1 line?
Yes, so there was a previous, about a year ago, there was a very similar proposal for area to the south of this parcel that we're looking at, and so basically, this was identified as being considered usable for that, further development of that space, that still allows for that H3 zoning to have that presence along the roadway.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move to the next item. Madam Clerk.
I'll call items 6C and D together. Item 6C and D is annexation 24004, application TCI Acquisition Corp., Inc., to annex approximately 32.41 acres, more or less, on property generally located at 8601 Highway 6, and the related conditional annexation agreement between the City and TCI Acquisition Group, Inc., for the property generally located at North 84th Street between U.S. Highway 6 and Fletcher
Law Firm. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, TCI Acquisition Corp, in support of this annexation. So the property we're discussing today, as stated, it is just, it is about the northeast corner of the City of Lincoln. It is just east of North Eighty-Fourth Street, and it takes access from Cornhusker Highway or Highway Six. You see this, this property, oh. See if I can zoom in a little bit. There we go. All right, so this is the area of our annexation. The applicant is seeking annexation generally to be able to get city water to the property. So that is where the associated annexation agreement notes there are two main points of that annexation agreement. They are sewer and water. That is to recognize that there is not sewer to this property, given some conditions and restrictions with topography. There will not be sewer to this property. The applicant is aware of that, and in the annexation consent to and agree and acknowledge the fact that this property will not be served with sewer within the next few years. Also, then there is the water. Again, that is the applicant is seeking water to this property. It's the main purpose of that annexation, so if I can put this map back here and get it zoomed correctly. The applicant has agreed to pay the cost to extend the water main, and that is water main from this intersection, and this is North Eighty-Fourth Street and Cornhusker, to this driveway of the property. So they're extending the water main in order to get water, city water service to this property. This was approved, was on consent agenda, and was approved unanimously at Planning Commission. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this application and the annexation agreement.
Are there any questions about this annexation and agreement?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak on this annexation and conditional annexation agreement? If you'd like to speak on this item, you may come forward. Seeing no one come forward, Madam Clerk, let's proceed.
I'll call items six E, F, G, and H together. Item six E is Change of Zone two four zero zero three, application of Glenbrook LLC to change the zone from AGR Agricultural Residential District to O-three Office Park District on property generally located on the northwest corner of South Seventieth Street and Nebraska Parkway, and approving the conditional zoning agreement between the City and Glenbrook LLC for the property generally located on the northwest corner of South Seventieth Street and Nebraska Parkway, and the related Comprehensive Plan Amendment two four zero zero four, application of Glenbrook LLC to amend the Lincoln-Lancaster County twenty-fifty Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from urban residential to commercial on property generally located at the northwest corner of South Seventieth Street and Nebraska Parkway, and the related Use Permit two four zero zero three, application of Glenbrook LLC for the use permit in the O-three Office Park zoning district to develop approximately fifty-one thousand square feet of office space with waivers on the property generally located on the northwest corner of South Seventieth Street and Nebraska Parkway.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening.
All right, that was a mouthful. Rob Ott, Senior Counsel for the applicant, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for listening to this a little bit. I'm going to go through this just a little bit. Senior General Counsel David Clausen will also just address a couple items that I'm not going to address, but we'll try to get through this with some dispatch. In high school, as a sophomore, my debate coach said, "Slow down." When I was a senior, that same debate coach said I hadn't learned anything. I will, I'll try to take a breath once in a while. All right, so actually, my history with this area goes back about forty years. I'm familiar with that Old Cheney Road, Fifty-Sixth Street, Seventieth Street area. I remember when there was an edge to Edgewood. If Kent Sequest was here, I'd kid him about it just a little bit, but this property was farmland, and the property that we're talking about actually was a farm. If you go back to the sixty-four Overheads or the Aerials, it shows that this is a farm. The owner then sold off the farmstead, sold off the farm, not the home, and north to South Fork, and so South Fork became South Fork the Development. And the home then lasted year after year after year on that little corner of Seventieth, as we went from essentially gravel roads in that, in some parts of that area, to four-lane highways, Seventieth Street taking the curve of the bend. So now we're given some opportunities out there. We've seen some growth along Nebraska Parkway, and I'm going to be, I'm going to try to, I'm not as good with this as maybe Ann is, but let me see. You all have a package of information and know what the property is, so that's the corner, as you can see, Seventieth Street coming north to south. There's that curve there that drives everybody crazy, and then Nebraska Parkway. The project anticipates fifty-one thousand square feet or so in two buildings. This is a preliminary plan. You all know that preliminary plans change, but this is the preliminary plan that we've adopted for presentation to you. I want to, Dave Clausen is going to talk about this a little bit more, but on page three of the materials that I handed out, I wanted to just point out how we've done collaboration with the city, quite frankly, and the state, a offset turn lane where that yellow band isn't a drivable lane, but it is the offset so that our turn lane that we've developed and designed, which actually mirrors another one, you get off the parkway and then go into a long turn lane. Again, I think David will address that just a little bit. The first thing I want to address is really the staff report and a couple of things, and that is, I don't know if it's the elephant in the room, but the staff has made a big point that this should be residential developed. And, you know, if it could have been residential developed, we would have developed it residentially years and years ago. We're really not in this kind of development business, although we're developers, but this property doesn't lend itself to residential development. We've seen, we've had, we've offered this property to any number of builders and developers and others, and just quite frankly, have not been able to even give it away. I would, on page four of your materials is a letter from John Rollis, and I'm not going to read it because you can read it, but essentially, he says, "I wouldn't build residentially on this property if the ground was essentially given to me," and why does he say that? He says that because a builder has to put in the infrastructure and build something and do something, and it is darn near impossible to get people to buy on traffic ways like this, especially this one, where there are two four-lane roads with lots of traffic, loud traffic, people coming downhill and coming in from Eighty-Fourth Street and other places, acceleration at a corner. There are homes that are built along there, no doubt about it, but this has changed, and again, from somebody who's been in the business for decades, he says, "Not me," and we've had him on the property any number of times. We had a letter of intent on the property to put apartments there, and a signed letter of intent, and as we went down that road, it appeared that the neighbors just absolutely didn't want to have that happen. We then sat with the neighbors, sat with some of the owners, and went through the analysis again about, okay, what could go here that isn't going to disrupt the neighborhood? And Post is going to talk in it just a little bit. We have the complete and absolute support of the neighbors. We've been working with them for maybe a year. We have a twenty-page set of covenants, which will govern how we develop this piece of property, and the planning, the planning department at the Planning Commission submitted a little diagram. We've got a hundred diagrams of how we could put homes on here. We can't get anybody that would even look at doing that. Simply put, just housing doesn't work. If it would have worked, we'd have done it, because this is a complicated little piece of property in a number of ways. It's clear that the planning department has issues with our plan. One thing they say is that it's contrary to the access management policy. I think in part that's true, but L.T.U. is approved of the deviation, and most importantly, N.D.O.T., who has access control over this stretch of Nebraska Parkway, has consented to this plan. Now, originally, they objected to it, and we asked them to reconsider it. We gave them all of our stuff. They looked at it again. Kim Lee Horn's been our traffic engineer, and Riga has been our local engineer, and they developed a plan with the offset that N.D.O.T. eventually approved. And I know that's a surprise a little bit to the city, but we think that this lays out really well. The planning staff also said that there's adequate commercial and office development along Nebraska Parkway, and I want to specifically address that, okay? Especially a word adequate. While I appreciate the word, it's not very helpful. It's not very helpful to have somebody say to you, "Well, there's adequate resources. There's adequate development out there. There's adequate commercial development out there," because it tends to be misleading. It lacks data. Well, if there is adequate development, where is that? Have they said there are eight places within a mile that we could build a fifty-one thousand square foot office space or medical space? No, they haven't done that. It's important to recognize that the planning department, I'll say this, operates from a position of caution. While that may be true, we think that it is the applicant who takes a risk that gets to make the assessment of adequate. I appreciate that we can have data, but at some point, a developer needs to step up and say, "I'll take that risk," and that's what happens. And furthermore, the planning staff's assertion, and I said this to the planning department or the Planning Commission, the planning staff's assertion that there's an adequate supply of commercial and office space in that area, I think negatively affects others. I think others may be considering development or expansion of a business, and this statement certainly creates barriers for those that might be looking. Not sure that's the signal that really you want to send to businesses in Lincoln, that the area is adequate in terms of its development. The other thing that I wanted to mention was the planning staff said that the surrounding neighborhood is residential. Again, that's just not quite true. The residential that abuts this property has agreed, and again, Ann Post will talk about that. Across the street is the Briar Church. If you go south, okay, you've got Home Depot and the Bylock Adoption Center and all the now businesses that are going on down there. Is there residential close? There is. But should that be the determining factor in a project like this? We don't think so. And you just approved not too long ago a project like this at Twenty-seventh and Old Cheney Road, which is by the fire station there, which backs up to a whole bunch of residential stuff. There was a comment at the Planning Commission meeting that the north-
Mr. Ott, just one moment. Ms. Fenner, if you're going to have a conversation, would you please take that outside?
No.
I can't hear. I need to do-
Would you please then hold your conversation until it is your turn to speak? Well, thank you.
I need to be able to listen to the person testifying.
Real cute. I'm not-
No, it's not cute. It's my job as a city councilman. I need to be able to hear city business.
Proceed.
Thank you for remaining quiet during someone else's presentation. Mr. Ott, continue.
The comment at the Planning Commission was that the north side of town really needs something like this. I don't disagree with that, but we don't own property on the north side of town, and quite frankly, the preliminary interest that we have is for this space. So in any event, I wanted to address South Fork just a little bit. I've mentioned Ann, and she'll be here momentarily, but when was the last time you had a commercial development like this bring forward the consent of a big neighborhood next door? And I would say, doesn't happen real often, but there are reasons that it is happening in this space. I also want to address the Country Meadows neighbors. Coincidentally, quite a long time ago, I represented the Country Meadows Homeowners Association when we went to war with Lowe's. Some of you wouldn't remember that, but some of you might, and I understand there's a contingent there that did not want any development happening within their radius. I understand that. I've talked to several neighbors and tried to understand what they're really looking for there, and what their fear is really that westbound traffic from either our development or others will try to make a U-turn at their intersection, which is just down the street from us. We've talked to traffic. I don't know what we do onsite to mitigate that, but certainly we suggested a no-turn sign. I know people will violate a no-U-turn sign, but I think there's some things that can be done to mitigate that particular concern. Okay, I want to go through this and then introduce Dave. Couple of things. Our request is that you approve these three applications. I've forgotten something, but I'm going to get through this. The resolution for the use permit, in your package, that starts at page ten, and there are just a couple of issues that we want to address there, and I'll address them with you. On page two, the planning staff has asked that we delete medical from all buildings, tables, and titles. We're not sure that that's really necessary. Planning suggested that that may cause confusion in some way. We think that people that are sophisticated enough to buy property like this or build on property would understand the difference. If that's a big issue, we'd agree to that, but I'd suggest that be deleted. Item F, there was a concern that a retaining wall shown on this plan doesn't allow enough room for landscaping. Again, this is a preliminary plat. My suggestion is that that could be deleted and be a condition of a final plat, or actually, it's part of our agreement with the Homeowners Association. I wasn't sure what three H was. That's on page twelve. Maybe I could slide this over, maybe. Three H says revise the traffic study to the satisfaction of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. We haven't heard anything that our current plan needs to be revised, and I would suggest that that can be deleted. We don't have any information about why our current plan might be deficient. Okay, next issue. So I'm on three J, revise the site plan to show the extension of the northbound to westbound turn lane. Okay, so this is going north on Seventieth Street, coming out of Home Depot and Bylock Adoption, Pet Adoption Center, okay, and the city says there's a stretch of a left-hand turn lane that should be extended by the developer. We have so little impact overall on this whole intersection, we don't think we should be responsible for that. Additionally, the city's in the process of a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar project to put a right-hand turn lane, I'm sorry, I'm getting all these turn lanes on you, a right-hand turn lane going east on Nebraska Parkway. Seems to me that could be done as part of that development, but certainly shouldn't be part of what our responsibility is. And I would note in your materials, sorry, I'm making you flip back, that Curtis Rowe on page nine sends an email that says, "A bit of clarification is in order." I'm in the second paragraph. "We examined the entire intersection. Our recommendation to extend the northbound lane was provided without assigning responsibility or the cause. Whether the applicant did this or not, that lane should be extended." We're just saying, "We didn't necessarily cause it. Maybe we added to it, but that lane should not be our sole responsibility." Talked about, okay. On page thirteen, item seven, "We would like this condition to be waived if the trip generation is nine-hundred-and-eighteen or less per hour, essentially a year-ago traffic study by Kim Lee Horn." So there's been two traffic studies. One was actually an error, and it did the footprint of the building. That was revised after the state noticed an error. The second traffic study was then done and then raised this trip count. Originally, we didn't have any objection or any real requirement that we build the, now go south on Seventieth Street and take a right going west, that turn lane. We have agreed that if we put in our full development, that we would also put in, or use our impact fees to put in a new turn lane. So now I'm going, this is South Seventieth, this is the new turn lane, sorry for my bad penmanship, but we'll put that turn lane in. But if our development ends up being half the size, we think that that requirement on page thirteen of my materials should be deleted. We also think that if the impact fees go to pay for that turn lane, I've got an estimate in your materials, I'm not going to go over it, that turn lane's estimated at about four-hundred-thousand dollars. Impact fees, maybe three-hundred or more thousand dollars, so it looks like it might get paid for. We'd like the city to pay for any design or construction costs that aren't paid for there. Okay. I think that is then reflected in my changes to the conditional zoning agreement, page eighteen. I'm not going to go through those all again. So those are our ask. Our ask is that you approve these applications, subject to the modifications that I've dealt with. We were not fortunate enough to come with the eight oh Planning Commission vote. We bring this to you on a five-three vote. We bring this to you on a 5-3 vote against the project, but if you read your materials, you saw that Dick Campbell voted against in the final vote because he wanted to get this to you and not delay us any further. Dick Campbell, Dick has been a supporter of this, and, and obviously, we hope he will too. Just going to make another note, and then I'm going to close and have David Clausen come up. Was it the Foxtail Ribbon Cutting sometime ago, weeks ago, a month ago? And there was much zeal for the housing and for the project and for the development, and that's really important. I think it's important for our community, but I hope you have the same zeal and vigor toward developments and businesses that attract people to work. High-paying jobs and those sorts of things, because you can't have one without the other. A community that grows through employee and workforce housing grows also because of good jobs and places to work and, and a good community. This project makes good sense. The neighbors support it, and if you'll give David Clausen just a minute, he's going to follow me up. Oh, before I step down, any questions?
Yeah, I think there will be.
Okay. Do you want me to wait till David's done?
Why don't we wait till David's done, then we can, we'll take, keep our notes here?
Thank you.
All right. Welcome. Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, guys. So, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is David Clausen. I represent Glenbrook LLC, 129 North 10th Street. I want to focus tonight on three parts: safety, the financial benefits for Lincoln, and the precedent question, concern raised by the planning department. First, I want to talk about safety because I think that this is the most important part of all of our proposals. As a company based in Lincoln, our employees drive by this parcel in U-70th Street, Nebraska Parkway, every day, in some cases. Safety is truly at the forefront of our minds. Our proposed access point utilizes a hatched, offset right turn lane, which was specifically designed for safe deceleration and turning movements, and as Rob alluded to, mirrors in many design respects. The nearby access to Artisan and Country Meadows that I'm showing here on the screen, off of Nebraska Parkway and 66th Street. The long driveway provides ample stacking distance for vehicles entering the site, ensuring they're fully clear of the parkway, as well as having the needed site distance for exiting drivers. Our traffic engineers, Kim Lee Horn, have confirmed that this design actually enhances safety by providing a dedicated deceleration zone, separate from the main travel lanes. In the, in a letter to the planning commission, they state, quote, "It is our professional opinion that the right-in, right-out access along Nebraska Parkway in the location proposed will operate safely and efficiently to serve traffic generated by the project, as well as the traffic motoring on Nebraska Parkway." Furthermore, our access design has been thoroughly vetted and approved, as Rob, Rob said, by the Nebraska Department of Transportation and LTU. So, we're not just expressing our opinion about safety. We've obtained approval from the very agencies tasked with ensuring safe roadway design. Second, I'd like to talk about financial impact. And this, this is on page 28 of your materials. The medical office complex we're proposing, if fully built out, we, we estimate would generate approximately $213,000 in annual property tax revenue. To put this in perspective, if we were to develop this parcel as a single-family homes or townhomes, which the planning department has suggested, the tax revenue generated would be less than half of what a medical office complex could generate. I don't need to tell all of you that in today's economic climate, where city governments throughout Nebraska are heavily scrutinized by taxpayers regarding property tax burdens, while at the same time attempting to maintain services that the residents expect, that our proposal represents a significant opportunity. Next, I'd like to turn to the planning department's recommendation of denial, which is on page 30, which raised a concern about setting a precedent. With all due respect, we disagree with this assessment. We've conducted a thorough analysis of the Parkway corridor with, with Reg Engineering, our local engineering firm. Between 84th Street and 27th Street, there are perhaps two other parcels that could conceivably request an access similar to what we are asking for, one being Bree and Church, but they already have an access point along both 70th Street, as well as off of Ashbrook Drive, which connects to Nebraska Parkway. And then two to the east of West Gate Bank, near 56th Street and Nebraska Parkway. So, respectfully, I think that the Bree and example can be tossed out, as they already, as I mentioned, have two access points. So, one potential future case hardly constitutes a concerning precedent, especially given the unique characteristics of our site. The planning department's report also suggests that approving our access request, quote, "degrades the expressway function." Frankly, I'm not entirely sure what is meant by degrades in this context. If degrading the Parkway means potentially slowing traffic from its current 55 mile-an-hour speed as vehicles enter our city, well, I would suggest that that's actually a benefit, not a detriment, and we're all for that. Nebraska Parkway shouldn't be thought of or treated as an Audubon, especially as it transitions into more densely populated and developed areas of Lincoln. So, in, in summary, we feel this project is a win for Lincoln, which is why we're seeking your approval. Medical offices are ideal neighbors. They operate during normal business hours, generate minimal noise, and provide essential services to our community. Our project has the potential to bring specialized medical services closer to Lincoln residents while generating substantial tax revenue for the city. We've worked diligently with the Nebraska Department of Transportation and the relevant city staff to design an access plan that prioritizes safety and efficiency. The offset turn lane we're proposing provides a solution that minimizes impact on Nebraska Parkway traffic flow by pushing vehicles into a separate and conspicuously marked lane. The abutting South Fork's neighbors get to maintain the peaceful character of their neighborhood, and we, the developer, get the opportunity to put this complicated piece of property to its highest and best use. This isn't about, quote, "degrading anything." Far from it. It's about smart development that maximizes the value of our city's commercial corridors while keeping safety at the forefront. The precedent concern raised by the planning department is respectfully overstated, given the limited number of similarly situated sites along Nebraska Parkway, and for those reasons, I respectfully urge you to approve this change of zone and access request based on the merits and significant benefits it will bring to Lincoln. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If that is the end of your presentation, or is one more? The engineer-
Real quick, real quick. Nate Burnett, Reg Engineering, 601 Old Chaney Road. Just a couple, just a couple points here. David mentioned the precedent. That's based on the length of turn lane, so as we looked at the properties along there, we looked at the, basically the width of those properties, and could they actually have a turn lane? So, just clarifying that. And then a couple of other things regarding the medical office within South Lincoln. Previously, just in the last couple of years at 27th and Old Chaney, as Rob mentioned, that just got approved. That was 22,000 square feet of medical office, 2.27 acres, so it was about 10,000 square feet of medical office per acre. Very close to our site at Pine Lake and Nebraska Parkway, 42,000 square feet on 3.14 acres, so that was 13,375 square feet of medical office per acre. With our request of the 51,000 square feet, that's just over 10,000 square feet, so very comparable to those recent projects. And then the last thing that I would just maybe note is, within the comp, comp plan staff report, it was talked about going away from urban residential. While there is an existing single-family home on the site, it does state within the urban residential definition in the comp plan that undeveloped areas shown as urban residential may also include neighborhood-scale commercial and other compatible uses, and we believe this plan with the South Fork neighbors' approval and go-ahead with the covenants, we feel that this does meet that neighborhood-scale commercial as we've looked at other properties.
All right. Thank you. Councillors, questions? Councilman, I mean, I'm so sorry, Bowers.
No, I just had a couple of quick questions, and if you think it's better to hold off to answer these questions after some more information, I'm totally cool with that. So, just to be clear, it's your position that that lot right now, it's, it wouldn't be residential, because if it would have been residential, it would have been residential already?
For sure. And, and I would say one more thing. That lot, if, if you've ever kind of been by there and you're going either west or east on Nebraska Parkway, is really high up. I mean, it's on the, on the east side, and it falls from that high up all the way down to below grade of Nebraska Parkway. So, it's, it's, it's not just a flat piece of property that you could build a bunch of homes on. It just isn't. And we have had, I just will tell you, I've had builders out there, I've called builders, I could give you their names if they'd want me to, can't find anybody. It, it's, it's such an investment to put, put those kind of houses on this little piece of property where there isn't a gigantic or a big development to defray some of the difficulties. I think John Roth said in his letter, you know, you have to defray the fact that these lots are going to sell last, these lots are going to sell least expensively, these lots, look at his letter, please, and, and this was to, this was to Chairman Washington, and he gave me a copy, and I think, and I sent a copy to planning. But look at his letter regarding, regarding residential.
Okay, thank you. The next question that I have is, you mentioned having the support of the neighborhood. As I was looking through the opposition and, or the proponents and the opponents in the planning commission's report, it looked like Country Meadows was in opposition, but the South Fork-
Yes.
-was in support. Can you help me understand kind of the difference between the two neighbors and like why one would have more standing than the other?
Yeah, for sure. So, as you're going west on Nebraska Parkway, you come to 70th Street, okay? And you turn left to Home Depot, you turn right to go north on 70th Street. Our development is to the right. To the north of our development is South Fork. Those are the neighbors that Ann Postle is going to talk about. Keep going down Nebraska Parkway, and the next drive, pardon me, the next driveway on the left, some maybe 1,500 feet west, you take a left, and, and that is Country Meadows. And so, those are also big, big homes, kind of exclusive, and it winds back up into the Country Meadows neighborhood. I know many of those people up, up there. And so, the difference is, Country Meadows is on the opposite side of the four-lane Nebraska Parkway, whereas the South Fork, trying to get my, make sure I say, say it all right, South Fork is to the north, immediately abutting our proposed development.
Okay, so because it's further away, then is kind of what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, a little further away, you know, away from the four-lane intersection. They have concerns, no, no doubt about it. They do.
I just have two more questions, if that's cool.
Go ahead.
So, knowing, it was a split vote, and I know Dick switched his vote so that way he'd come in front of the council. And feel free not to answer this, because I'm going to kind of ask you, just kind of give me a little bit of your judgment here. Where do you think that the planning commissioners who voted for denial were incorrect in their judgment?
Oh, what a great question. Couple of things. One, one of the planning commission members said, "We shouldn't be making a decision on something that's, that's already in part of the planning and, and part of the comprehensive plan. That's a policy decision that should be made someplace else." Disagree with that. As, as Nate pointed out, comprehensive plan is a plan, but it says all over the place that to the extent that the plan needs to change over the course of time, it does. And it, and it should. So, so that was, that was one. I think there was some, some, a little bit of anxiety about following the planning staff recommendation. And I don't want to say blindly so, but one of the council, one of the planning commission members said, "Well, we have professional staff." I don't disagree with that. I've known Steve for lots of years. We have a professional staff, and they're very good. As I said in my remarks, I think they tend to be a little conservative once in a while. They don't take any, they, they're not the ones that are going to take any risk. And so, I think the planning commission member that said, "Gosh, I want, you know, we, we're going to follow the planning staff recommendation because they're our professional planning staff." So, those are a couple of examples.
Gotcha. No, I appreciate that. The last question that I have, oh, sorry.
Respectfully, can I jump in? There's also a, a planning commission member that noted that she felt that more development should be built north rather than south, and, you know, respectfully, we think that's a market decision and not up for the planning commission to stipulate where development-
Very good, yeah.
Last question that I have is, you mentioned Kim Lee Horn, and that they had a professional opinion. Can you explain to me, I'm not too familiar with Kim Lee Horn and who they are, can you kind of explain what their organization is?
Holy cow. Nate?
Kim Lee Horn is an engineering firm. They've got offices all over the country. One of their main things that they do is traffic studies, and so, on this project, Kim Lee Horn had assisted us with preparing the traffic study.
Okay, so big engineering firm. Okay, that makes sense. Thanks so much.
Any other questions?
There may be. Councilman Duden.
Just, just a couple of clarifications, Judge. So, you're only asking for a right-in and right-out access point for this-
Yes, yes. We would have loved to have, like, we would have loved to have asked for more than that, but knew that that wasn't going to fly anywhere. Country Meadows has right-in, has a full access interchange at Country Meadows. We're only asking for right-in, right-out.
And to Country Meadows, they're having extreme difficulty with a left-out of that area because of the speed of vehicles coming up over the hill and down Parkway from 70th. They really can't get out. They have to wind through to the traffic signal by Lowe's in order to have access-
Yeah, you know, that, that's, that's existed there for decades, decades, and they, they do have a relatively convenient way to go through Country Meadows to the east and back out to the traffic light at, at the Lowe's intersection, which is 70th and, and the traffic light.
And Country Meadows, really, just south of this property is pretty much hidden because there's quite an embankment that goes up from Nebraska Parkway, so you don't even see the houses in that, that range.
Done by design, for sure.
Right. Now, and can you tell us, what's, what's this dark spot that's on the, the map that we have, kind of in that triangle far corner?
What page are you on?
I'm on page two.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, detention, that'd be a green area.
Detention pond?
Yeah, yeah, detention. Any development has to comply with the detention standards.
Because there's quite a slope to this property, so.
Yeah, I can't remember, Nate, 30 feet slope?
Forty feet.
Forty feet, high to low, in, in that little bit of area? So, high to low, 40 feet.
And, and at the intersection there at 70th and Nebraska, are you going, are you going to have to lower that grade somewhat where the houses and?
The short answer is, we don't know for sure. The way this is built, that building, we have height restrictions, so that building has been already compressed down, and it will probably have, it would have underground parking as it's designed now, again, pressed as low as, as we can get it. And I'll, I'll make one other comment. That building is aligned north-south rather than east-west.
Correct.
And the reason it's aligned north-south rather than east-west is because that will cut off more noise from 70th Street and from Nebraska Parkway to the neighborhood above.
So, it almost makes it look like a walkout house type of building?
It, it does, it does. And so, yes.
That's all comments I had.
Okay. Mr. Ott, I have a couple of questions. In reading through all this material, it really hits me that there are two questions, one of access and one of land use. And it's not unusual for the planning commission or city council to make a, a change in the comprehensive plan around land use, and we often have those kinds of conversations we did so earlier today, from H3 to I1.
Right.
And so, I don't know that I have a lot of questions around land use- And so, I don't know that I have a lot of questions around land use. I do have some questions around access. And reading through the report, when NDOT initially reviewed this proposal, they denied.
They did, yes.
And the applicant, your applicant came back a month later and NDOT had agreed to approve. And in that, that initial conversation that you had with NDOT or maybe even preceding the first application, it was discovered that the state Department of Transportation retained the access rights to Highway 2. And so, in the intervening period of time between the first application and the second application, I am curious if the Department of Transportation sold their access rights or waived their access rights? Can you tell me what the motion was that NDOT did to allow or permit this project?
This has had kind of a circuitous route. So, we had a traffic study done. I referenced the first traffic study that was December, maybe of 2023. That articulated along until then, and we filed our applications and all that kind of stuff, got to the point where the city then said, "Oh, wait a minute. We think the, the state has the right to approve access along this corridor." Everybody went, "Okay, wait." And, and so, we then ginned up the whole other process to get this to the state. We did. Took them a while to review it. We got word from planning, not to us directly, but word from planning, that the state had denied it. In the interim, the state had also pointed out, as I mentioned, that the original traffic study was on a footprint, not a total square foot of building area. So, Kimley Horn went back, redid the traffic study, and so, the state, we asked the state to review it again. The state did, and then the state said, "No, we, we're okay with this." And so, I, I think I printed the letter from the state in these materials. I don't know if I could just flip right to it. But, but somewhere in your materials, because I know you've got a pile of them, somewhere in your materials, you have the letter from the state that, that says that they have approved of it. Now, I, I will mention that they approved of it with, with conditions. And so, again, we've gone back to planning and, and Nate and, and, and put all those, you know, designed the, the project with those, with those conditions.
Okay. So, I mean, partly, I think when I started to read this, I was a little surprised as well, because when the state turned over Nebraska Parkway, when they said Highway 2 is moving further south and this was Nebraska Parkway and this was the City of Lincoln's, I thought the City of Lincoln had full control of the Nebraska Parkway. So, to find out that...
Join us in being shocked.
Okay.
Yeah.
That Department of Transportation still has access. And so, I'm just curious if they had sold their access to the developer? Do they, do they sell access rights or do they retain and permit?
No, no, they, they retain and permit.
Okay.
So, no, we did, we didn't buy it, we didn't pay them for it, we just asked that they review it, given the circumstances again. And they reviewed it and looked at it and I think maybe realized what, what Dave Clausen said, "There are only so many places along High, Nebraska Parkway that somebody could do something like this." I think one, maybe. But, but I think the state went back. I don't know, I don't know what, you know, what they did in their, their room, but they went back, looked at it, took all the engineering and, and then approved of it.
Just safety-wise, and I'm trying to picture this, and I appreciate your artwork on, on page, where is it? Page six.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
I, I think it's really important that folks driving along Nebraska Parkway and folks coming onto the Parkway from Seventieth and from your project, if your project is approved, that it's safe, that, that nobody ends up having a high-speed accident because there's just a lot of traffic on, on Highway 2. And so, what I really wanted to see was how the right turn lane that come, that would be south on Seventieth at the corner, how does that communicate?
What are the particulars?
With the, with the deceleration lane and the right turn in on your project?
Beyond my pay grade.
Okay.
But Nate is the guy, along with Kimley Horn, that would sit down with a sharp pencil or a computer and, and figure that all out. There are ways to do that. I can't stand here and say, "I can do any better than my artwork that says there's, there'll be a turn lane there."
Well, I can see you're not an engineer, but that's all right. But I just, I mean, and I think that I really need to hear from LTU about how that, those two things work together, because it sort of seems like it's possible someone could make a right-hand turn and someone would be moving over to decelerate and there would be...
There, there is a fair amount of space between that and the entry into our deceleration lane.
Okay.
So, there is that. Again, that's engineering.
Yeah. I just, I'm just trying to, to sort of, I also have the same kinds of safety concerns around the U-turn. And so, the idea that people are going to come out of your project and then want to make a quick U-turn so that they can go east on the Parkway. I mean, I, I think that it's, for me, it's a safety issue. There's access safety and then there's land use. But I'm trying to understand all of this, the, the safety and what can be done to make certain that people aren't running into each other.
Sure. So, currently, there's, this line here right now is striped and that's kind of almost like a natural buffer to get onto Nebraska Parkway from if you turned right. And so, we're not starting basically the offset deceleration lane until that reaches that current shoulder. And so, I guess we did not specifically lay out the right turn lane on Seventieth, but just drawing, let's just say, few robs. If we move that over, there still would be probably, I'm going to guess, 80 to 100 feet before that turn lane on Nebraska Parkway then starts. So, you know, with this signal, anybody coming westbound, as long as the people on Seventieth don't turn right in front of them, there should be plenty of room for that movement, for both those movements to work. And we feel that, you know, right now, there's kind of a pseudo-not-really turn lane there where people try and get over right. And so, having a dedicated turn lane would definitely make this even more of an enhanced intersection for safety.
Yeah. Okay. I will ask the same questions about LTU, so please don't be offended.
Sure.
I, I, I would also note that I think the requirements that are in the materials require...
The staff report, yeah.
Requires that it be designed according to safety and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'm sure. Councilman Beck, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nate, sending off of Councilwoman Washington's question here, "Did the traffic study make any sort of indication as to whether or not, not a right turn on red at that intersection there would be helpful in either stopping people from turning on red and possibly conflicting with traffic that would then be moving to the decel lane or, or not?"
I don't specifically remember that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And then, Rob, only question I had for you is, I think you said in your testimony while you were speaking, and perhaps it was just a misstatement, you said the City of Lincoln had consented to the, the access point. My, my impression from everything I've read thus far is that the state of Nebraska has consented to that access point. I haven't seen anything that the City of, of Lincoln actually has.
I, I would say it this way, the, the part of the process is the applicant has to ask for a deviation from LTU. And LTU provided, and if I could dig through my briefcase, I would find you the LTU consent for the deviation.
Okay.
So...
If you have that, I would love, not now, not now, later.
Oh, there, here we go. Nate comes to the rescue again.
There's the approved deviation.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had, Madam Chair.
All right.
And, and actually, that is in your materials, not the materials that I provided. I don't know what's not in there, but I didn't put it in there.
Staff report.
But it is in your, but it is in your materials, in the staff report, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions for the team, the development team? Seeing no questions, you know, don't leave the room. We might, we might change our minds later. Let's move on to the other presenters in this and then we will want to talk to staff. Ms. Post, are you next?
I'd be happy to be. So, all right. If I could get your map for the site, I have a black and white map. It might be more helpful to be able to see in color, so.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. My name is Ann Post. I'm an attorney with Rembert Ludkey Law Firm. I'm here today on behalf of the South Fork Neighborhood Association. So, if we can get this, the South Fork Neighborhood Association is this neighborhood here. And specifically, you will note that their interest is that this is 69th Street, which you'll see isn't built out with a street, but is shown as the street access to this So, as I said, I'm here for the South Fork Neighborhood Association and I'm here today in support of this application. So, first, I'll start back at the very beginning. When we started having conversations and hearing of development at this property, the first thing South, the South Fork Neighborhood did was really step back and evaluate this property. As stated by Mr. Ott, this is a five-plus acre parcel that is currently a single-family residential acreage surrounded by what's being called an expressway and a major arterial on two sides. It's not exactly the environment most people are looking for when they're trying to buy a single-family residential acreage. More than that, it's got fantastic frontage for any commercial development that you would have your, you know, your name and very accessible, very accessible signage to any consumer that would want to access that site to see what services are available. So, between the lack of marketability for residential, the marketability that's there for commercial, the neighborhood first stepped back and said, "Looking at this property, it is, the question isn't will this redevelop, it's how this will redevelop." And so, with that, they started from that point to have the discussion with the developer on potential support for this project. So, starting from that viewpoint, the next question was, "What is the potential impact on this neighborhood?" The neighborhood's biggest concern, as I pointed out, was that access from 69th Street. As was stated, this neighborhood was approved in 1988 when it was well beyond city limits. It was annexed in 1992 and its streets look like it. While these streets are more than adequate for the, the use of the neighborhood, current use of the neighbors and the residents that live there, these, as you will see, are not up to city standards. These will not support, and the neighbors are very concerned that this will not support material additional traffic onsite. So, you'll see there's no curbs and gutter here, you'll see significant patching. Just here is another view of the same street. This is actually the street that go, this is that 69th Street. And so, that's where their biggest concern was the traffic flow through the neighborhood and ensuring that they wouldn't have that traffic flow on these streets that just can't handle it. So, with that is where they discarded, started discussions with the developer about their concerns for the development and a vision for what it could look like. I will commend the developer that they sat down early in the process before even, I think, the first application to NDOT, to talk to the neighborhood and say, "What could this look like?" The idea of a medical office, medical office and office on this site was discussed. We discussed how high the buildings would be, what the facade would look like, lighting restrictions, really put together a vision for that, what this commercial development would look like and how it would minimize the impact on the neighborhood. After we had a, the board came to consensus on what that vision would look like, the next question was, "What kind of legal framework can we put to that vision to actually make sure that we have the legal protections in place to make sure that's what happens?" Now, of course, the first step of that, well, a necessary step for that is the zoning that's in front of you today. But also, the question was, of course, zoning is at the discretion of the city council, of the planning department, of the planning commission, and how to ensure that the neighbors actually had more control over that process, had the ability to enforce and ensure that the development stuck with the vision in the long run. So, with that, after we built this vision, we set to negotiating a set of covenants. So, that's where the developer has agreed to and actually handed me the signed copy of the covenants that is contingent on approval of this development. That includes all of those restrictions that we talked about. That includes a 50-foot setback from the neighborhood for this commercial development. That includes requirements for landscaping in that 50-foot setback. That includes facade materials. That includes additional height restrictions for what, for what can be built there, all to ensure that this development, since it will redevelopment, is the most compatible with the South Fork Neighborhood Association and something that has a minimal impact on the neighborhood. So, with that, with those in hand is where the South Fork Neighborhood Association both sincerely appreciates the developer's work to put together those covenants, to negotiate those back and forth. We even got into details like what the hood size of any neutral coffee shop could be. But to have those in place to really give those neighborhood that protection, not only for today's conversations, but to make sure that there is that legal framework that goes above and beyond what the zoning requirements are, to ensure the, the development looks like what the, looks like the neighborhood's vision for the long run. So, with that, we appreciate those conversations. Today, the South Fork Neighborhood is here in support of this application. And then, the last thing I wanted to do was to mention, I know one question was, you know, what the difference was at planning commission and why, why we think there was such a gridlock there? And I think one of the reasons I would suggest is because as Councilperson Washington was pointing out with her line of questioning, the applications that are in front of you are all about land use. I think there was, there is a lot of discussion of the access point as well. As has been pointed out, the access point is at the discretion of NDOT. NDOT has already approved the access point. Access points don't usually come in front of planning commission. I think LTU or a legal counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know when I submit a deviation request, usually first it goes to LTU. If that gets denied, it goes to the city council. So, that's not something that generally the planning commission is really asked to weigh in on. And so, that's where you have that difference between that land use question and the access point question, which had really kind of led to that gridlock and not separating out the questions into, you know, what is before us today? What's before us today is the change of zone, the comp plan amendment, the use permit amendment and all of the, I think one more, which are all the land use applications that are in front of us, not the access point, because that's already been approved by NDOT. So, with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Post?
And I haven't looked through the full report, but I expect there's a copy of those covenants in here also.
I do have one.
Yes.
Your agreement, the, the covenants, if that property is sold, I assume that stays with the land, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yep, that, that will be recorded with the register of deeds, so it runs with the land and binds any future commercial developer.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Do council members have questions for staff? I, I have one, at least for Director Elliott.
Well, I didn't quite understand that we were getting in an opposition. I thought she was part of the presentation. So, hearing that that was a, a statement in support, I'm going to hold off additional public statements and support in opposition, talk to staff and then come back to the public. All right. Director Elliott.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. Can we talk a little bit about the required right-hand turn lane?
Yes. So, little background, when the state relinquishes a road, all that really means is they get to cross it off their books for maintenance and obligation. What they still retain in all relinquishments is actual legal rights and they control any access approvals. So, any deviation requests that comes to us on any former state highway that has been relinquished actually is up to NDOT and our, my signature approval-denial doesn't really matter which way it goes is purely perfunctory because I have no legal right to override NDOT. So, I did sign off in a perfunctory method, my acquiescence to NDOT's ruling that this, they were going to allow this access point on Nebraska Parkway. And my, my sign off on that was acknowledging NDOT's legal authority over that and reminding them that they had to comply with NDOT's standards and specifications for their road.
Okay. Thank you. That's clear.
It's very unfortunate.
So, do you have...
It's very unfortunate.
Do you have an opinion on the right-hand turn lane from 70th to Nebraska Parkway, and how it aligns or communicates with the deceleration lane and right turn, right turn in, right turn out?
70th and Nebraska Parkway are both major, major arterials. So they are very busy. They have a higher rate of speed. We typically would not want an access point at such an intersection. The major, major intersection ratings in town for other major, major arterials is an average of .873, and that's kind of a crash data per million vehicles in the area. 70th and Nebraska Parkway is double the average in that area. So there are traffic concerns in that area, even as it is. This development, as proposed concurrently, will add an additional 100 vehicles during the peak hours. And so that is why the turn lanes on 70th Street are required.
Were you saying that the crash data, the double, the rate crash data is current?
It is, that's based on current numbers. So when observed on a million entering vehicles, unit of measure, traffic engineering numbers, our average major, major intersections with a traffic signal, so that would be those similar to 70th and Nebraska Parkway, are in 2019 through 2021, have a rating of .873. Currently, again, using 2021, 2019 to 2021 numbers, Nebraska Parkway and 70th is at a 1.5.
Director Carey, would you like to give us a little bit of your insight, and why the recommendation for denial?
The recommendation for denial is largely based on a longstanding identification of this property to be for urban residential in the comp plan. And at the staff level, we had discussions about this proposal, in addition to the concerns with the access point and the need for, or if there were going to be turn lanes, discuss really kind of the general feel for what would work here, what could work here, and what maybe wouldn't work here. And where we landed is that this, as was pointed out with the aerials on the maps, that with the South Fork Neighborhood to the north, that this was planned for, that road stub to do what we do in many different locations throughout the community, is planned for a future road extension for a similar type of development. So residential next to residential is what the plan has been saying. And so we feel that that is still the most appropriate land use here. So that is the basis of that point of decision. I will take the opportunity to explain that the way that we've handled this process since the change of opinion from DOT in this process to allow for the access point, that that did, obviously, there was a new dynamic there, because during the middle of this process, we were told that it was denied, and then it was, that decision was changed. So kind of in the middle of this process, that consideration had to be then considered. Director Elliott kind of walked through kind of what that meant for the access control point here, that kind of made that a perfunctory step in the process at that point. So with that, we have then considered this process and this proposal, knowing now that there's an access allowed off of Nebraska Parkway. And that is how we get to looking at the traffic study that was submitted by the applicant, and the increase in traffic that has been shown that will occur with this proposed development, and then kind of set this up for what's up for your consideration is, if it were to be approved, that agreement would need to be approved as well to provide for those turn lanes, that would provide for the most safe situation out there to address some of the considerations and concerns we have with the traffic.
I'm going to go back to Director Elliott for just a moment. Given the recommendations from planning, and I'm assuming from yourself as well, if the project were to be approved, do you have any forecast for what the crash data would look like, should all of these things be factored in and actually constructed?
So on the northbound, well, on 70th Street, let's just focus on 70th Street. So because the peak hour morning is now going to be an extra 94 vehicles, and the evening peak is going to be an additional 45, that's why we required these, the southbound right turn lane. And so, and then additionally, as their traffic study indicated, and that was highlighted in their traffic, their updated traffic study, as well as the northbound left turn lane on 70th as well. That one already exists. It would just be extending that to allow for more stacking in that area, given the additional volumes in that area. The, I don't know if we could provide a speculative estimate of crash data on what that would be. We do think the turn lanes on 70th Street would help minimize those potential crash points, and that's why we do think the turn lanes are appropriate. I don't know, though, that I could speculate just overall what that would be.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions from other councilors? Duden, I'm sorry, Councilman Duden and Councilman Carlson.
Liz, right now, at 70th and Highway 2, there are absolutely no right-hand turn lanes, correct?
Correct. So on 70th--
Although, although it looks like traffic is making--
Yes.
--in turn lanes, because it's wider in places.
Have you seen me drive there? No. So eastbound, on Nebraska Parkway, eastbound, we do have a safety project that is underway and is currently finishing design for a eastbound right turn lane south onto 70th. So that is, should be in construction in 2026. And so that is a safety project that we do have, and that funding is secured, and it's in the process of being completed. So that is coming, that will help in that direction. That is, you know, every, all of the eastbound, it doesn't necessarily help everything going into this.
I don't know why all of them don't have a right-hand turn lane, because even northbound on 70th, that the highway there, it's necessary, there's a lot of traffic because of all the development.
And that's why these conversations about developments and turn lanes are so important, is because we then have to live with them for years and decades. And so that is, as we go through, we try to anticipate what those are. I do understand that all of those improvements, though, do cost money, and whether it's the developer or the city, nobody has an abundance of cash sitting around, and decisions are made with all of the information they have at the time.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Collins.
My questions involving the speed limit there, was that taken into consideration with any of this? It's 55, if my memory is correct, too. Seems to me if you're going slower, your crash data is going to change, everything else kind of changes, including the lengths of the turn lanes we're talking about here. So is that something that was looked into?
So typically, on major arterials, you're looking at a 45 or higher. And so we would have potentially some decrease in speed. I think we've had some conversations with several members of council. But anytime you're at 45 or higher, it's not going to be a significant reduction in that, because it is still a fairly high speed on a major arterial road. So yes, we could look at that, that could be some of it, but at a 45 or higher, the turn lanes and stuff are likely going to be the same. I would double-check that with my, our traffic engineers, but roughly, it would be about the same.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for this panel? All right. Thank you so much. And with that, I will open up for public comment. So if there's anyone in the chambers who would like to address or speak on this issue, either in support or in opposition, please come forward. And introduce yourself, please. Good evening.
Sean Berry, 6801 North Fork Drive. I am president of the South Fork Homewards Association, and here to voice our support of the plan as proposed. As Ann and Rob have told you, we've had numerous meetings, there have been changes made to the plan at our request, development of covenants, and we feel that what's proposed will best preserve the quality of our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy Joe Kerr, 6811 South Fork Circle. I am one of the direct adjacent property owners of this. I'm also on the board. I really appreciate all the time that has been put into this through our board and through the developer, and I think we've come to a great understanding, and I think I really appreciate, and I hope that you guys approve this. And I would also, living there and being in my backyard, I would love the speed limit to be reduced on that street.
We'll note that. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
I'm sure.
Yes, Councilman Beckus.
If I may.
Please.
I would like to request, this is up for a vote next week on November 4. I would like to request a delay on items 6E through 6H, to work through some additional items here on this proposal. And I was wondering if my colleagues would be so kind as to be agreeable to delay until November 18, 2024, seeing as we do not have a meeting on November 11, 2024--
That is correct.
--with continued public hearing until that time.
All right. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Is there any discussion on this? Points of clarification?
I just have a question. Is that going to impact your guys' time limit, or?
Thank you for asking. We've got an excavator out there ready to-- No. No. That's fine. This has been a long process with lots of people talking to people, to the extent that we need to have more conversations, we want to have those conversations. So thank you.
Let me also add that this request has been put in front of and has been given its blessing by the developer, as well as Lincoln Transportation Utilities.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, Madam Clerk, would you call this motion to delay by one week, meaning that with continued--
With continued public hearing.
Hearing, and actually, it's two weeks.
Yes.
The next meeting?
November 18.
November 18. That is correct.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Thank you.
All right. All right. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you keep us moving ahead?
Section 7 is Resolutions. First readings are items 7A through 7L. Section 8 is Ordinances. First reading and related resolutions are items 8A through 8K. And pending list items are 9A through 9H.
All right. Today is a meeting for open public comment. And so as we go into this session, I'm going to remind folks that anyone wish, after all the public hearings, which we've had today, on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for this date, nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. And as you come forward, please identify yourself, the name of an organization. You may represent your address unless you are going to waive it for security reasons. Good evening. That's all right. We need to have the clock.
Evening. Okay, Sean Longel, 3G3 North, 44th Street, here again to advocate for the Palestinian people and try to get the city of Lincoln to not continue to participate in the genocide going on currently in the Gaza Strip, now being accelerated in the northern Gaza Strip. The state of Israel is now outlawed, or has banned UNRWA for operating. So now, we're just going to have people starving even faster, as well as we're bombing them with bombs being created partially here in the city of Lincoln. Again, I implore upon you to do whatever you can to stop this genocide that is going on.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Washington. Thank you, and all the rest of my friends here on the council. I appreciate all of your service. It's been a pleasure to work with many of you on issues over the years on behalf of Rioma. My name is Lynn Fisher. I'm current president of the Lincoln Real Estate and Real Estate Owners and Managers Association, Rioma. Getting late, isn't it, Benny? I see you nodding off over there. I'm going to try and keep you awake. So I'm here on behalf of our organization to talk about the benefits of our organization, and to remind you that we're always available to help with any questions you have on issues related to providing housing and landlord and tenant issues. So the Rioma organization offers several benefits that enhance housing choices for both property owners and tenants. Number one, we offer education and training. Rioma provides educational resources, including seminars and workshops, to help rental providers stay informed about fair housing laws, tenant rights, and best practices for property management. This knowledge ensures property owners are better equipped to meet tenants' needs, fostering a positive renting experience. Number two, advocacy and policy influence. Rioma advocates for balanced housing policies that consider the needs of property owners and tenants. This can help prevent overly restrictive regulations, encouraging more investment in real rental properties, and increasing the variety and available housing options. Number three, networking and support. By joining Rioma, rental providers gain access to a network of industry peers, which can be a resource for advice and problem solving. This collaborative environment supports better property management practices, improving rental quality and the range of housing choices available. Number four, resources for tenant screening and leasing. Rioma offers tools and guidance on effective tenant screening and drafting fair leases. This helps rental providers select reliable tenants, maintain stable tenancy, and reduce turnover, which ultimately benefits tenants seeking a long-term housing option. Number five, access to legal and financial services. Rioma partners with legal and financial professionals to offer affordable services to members enabling rental providers to manage properties more effectively and make improvements that enhance housing quality and affordability. Six, and lastly, RentWise participation. Rioma partners with the Lincoln Housing Authority and Community Action to provide tenant education through the RentWise program. Tenants learn how to navigate the renting process and learn their rights and responsibilities. Through these benefits, Rioma promotes responsible management, fair housing practices, and improved rental property conditions, resulting in more diverse, stable, and accessible housing option for renters. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do any councilors have questions for Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
My name is Anastasia Fenner. I'm going to waive my address, because obviously, for my own safety, and I'm just-- genocide is the ultimate evil. Lincoln, Nebraska participates in genocide. You have been silent. That's why your job is cute, Brody. It's cute, because-- It's cute, because you aren't stopping things like this. It doesn't matter if you can't hear some bullshit that affects very little people. That affects who? Some money grubbers? While this, this is, this is our legacy, right? Do we care about the environment like we say that we do? Are we going to pat ourselves on the back when we do a good job while mothers are starving? People just like you are starving? The, the water has been bombed. The electricity has been bombed. Tents, tents. People are living in tents, and they are being bombed with the 2,000-pound bombs that are made here in Lincoln, Nebraska. Now, does that make anything of what you guys have to say, ever? Drop a drop of water in the bucket of nonsense while we are allowing this to take place? You say that we have legislative power. Legislate some power! I don't understand how this is okay for you. Do you not have any sympathy with the people that have died because of your city? Lincoln, Nebraska is committing genocide. Bombs that are here are being used in a genocide. Is that the ultimate evil, or is it not? Do we care that people have clean drinking water, or do we not? Do we want to be part of this legacy? Do we want to continue? Because I'm really at a loss. I really don't understand how you can sit here and laugh and act like this is good governance, when your city is participating in genocide. How many community actions have to take place for you to come and listen to people who have actually been to Gaza? How many people do we have to see burn alive? We are complicit. When you do nothing, you are allowing general dynamics to continue to make bombs. All the components in those bombs are going to pollute the land. Bombs are not made out of eco-friendly materials, right? So if we allegedly care about the environment and preserving things, why are we allowing general dynamics to continue to do this? Do you see how your job is cute in regards to the real world, to the horrors that you are allowing to continue to happen? 2,000-pound bombs dropped on babies, mothers, people who are sick and dying? I have listened to the doctors. There's only 72 doctors that are allowed to go into Gaza at one time. 72. When they get there, they have no antibiotics. At what point are you okay with a doctor holding the brains of children in his hand, trying to figure out how he's going to tell the parents of this kid? There's nothing I can do. There's no painkillers. They can't go to the ER and, you know, receive care, because there is no care, because Lincoln, Nebraska is still making bombs, and you are allowing it. The cowardice of you all is so grand. Why are you afraid to talk about it? We just spent like, who knows how long, talking about some absolute nonsense, talking about some, some stuff that doesn't matter, because guess what? There's a genocide going on. And the amount of people that you are killing with your bombs takes precedent. When you talk about anything else, you are bargaining with the lives of children, of disabled people, of queer folks, of young folks, of the elderly. You are bargaining with their lives. So that's why it's cute, and you deserve no consideration of decorum, because where is the clean drinking water in Gaza? It was bombed by us. It was bombed by you, who have actual power! But no, 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 don't shame a business. Let's think about the business end of everything. Shame on all of you. Shame on you all.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward?
No, because you have public comment at the end of the day, when people have to leave because they have medication to take.
Madam Chair.
That I told they had to go to. But again, you're just going to continue to damage.
We have ended the meeting by acclamation. It is adjourned.